I'll miss you. All right, we'll call this meeting the Board of Ed to Order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, who's got the sign up sheet? Any grand that? See if there's any.
I just want to go on.
There's no sign up. Okay. Well, then, that's a very short public comment section. I did want to just note for the record, the departure of Dr. Krevikor. I wanted to thank him for his service on the board, particularly for helping us to really crank up the Special Education Committee and to, you know, begin some serious Board of Education Oversight of the Special Education rebuilding process. And I just wanted to go on the record as thanking Dr. Krevikor for his service. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Report, Biennial State Budget. Miraculously, we actually have one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually wanted to mention two things to you this evening. Yes, we have, we finally have a biennial state budget, and fortunately, we have been able to maintain our current level of VCS funding, as well as the Alliance Grant and 90 percent of the Priority School District Grant. You may recall, we budgeted 80 percent of the Priority School District Grant, so this puts us in, in very good shape going forward. I want to take this opportunity to thank our legislators, all of our legislators, who really, I think, worked very hard on our behalf, legislators of both parties, stayed in close communication with us, and certainly acted in Norwalk's best interest. I believe the city is also left whole, at least for this year, by the, by the biennial budget. Now, you have, as a placeholder, you have your November workshop scheduled as a reconciliation with the, with the state budget. Tom Hamilton will be running that meeting. He will review the state budget with you in some detail, and the implications for us. There are also changes that have implications for us in the implementer language, and Tom will review all of that with you, so that you're fully aware of it. There's quite a bit to this in the, in the compromise. The compromise is more complicated than either of the, the previous proposals or the Governor's Proposal. Also, at that time, Tom will outline for you the actions that the Board of Education may have to take relative to the city. And we're hoping that that night, you could take those actions. Now, one of the, one of the actions may involve, we're not sure, asking the city for our Alliance Grant back, because the first payment, 25 percent of it, went to the city. We understand that the, now that we have a budget, the other 75 percent will come directly to the school district. We may have to retrieve the 25 percent. That would require a special appropriation. We also have the issue of the use of our surplus. There is the issue of the 1 percent of the, of the surplus in the non-recurring account. That will require inaction on the board to request that. And then, we have the pilot that Mr. Barbous and the Parents Group have been working on with the mayor regarding the pilot program for snow plowing that involves contracting the two high schools. And, you know, that's, that is a cost of about 70,000, and it's an unbudgeted expenditure, so we would have to take that from our surplus funds, and there may be a separate request to the city for that. That will get the ball rolling, and as you know, the city has a more torturous process than we do for budget, so it has to go through committee, the council, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and so on. But I think everyone is proceeding in good faith, and the, the good news for all is that we will not be faced with any reduction this year, or it looks like we will, we will also be whole for next year, given the fact that this is a biennial budget. The Governor's Plan, yeah, the Governor's Plan only covered one year, but this, this covers both, so, again, lots of good news to share there. The other item I wanted to share is related to this, to some degree, and it's quite, it was quite a unexpected and surprising development in the last month or so. Ralph Valancisi and I attended a meeting in Greenwich last week. It was organized by Per Heinrich, the Per Heinrich Family Foundation, which is one of 20 foundations in Fairfield County. The, we had, we had, there are 20 foundations. We had all 20 foundation heads there, either the directors or the donor personally, and no one's been ever been able to do that before. I mean, we've, we've tried to do it, no, no one has been able to do it, but he was, he apparently had the influence to be able to command that, that attention. So, our success in closing one-third of the, of the achievement gap has spread beyond our, our borders, and the, the, this effort is, that's being organized has, as its consultants, two professors from Brandeis University, and the object of it is to raise a war chest that would assist, directly assist Norwalk in becoming the first city to close the, the achievement gap in Connecticut, and establish a proof point for, for the state, a replicable proof point. Many of these foundations are very discouraged with the impact that their grants have had on other school districts in terms of, of, of results, and, you know, success encourages further success, so we now have some friends in the, in the donor community. The, I mentioned the consultants from Brandeis. Ralph and I will be having lunch with Michael Chambers, who is the director of this effort, on Monday, and the next convening of the donor org, the donors will be in Norwalk in January. And this is, this is being organized to have some effect in terms of the next school year, in terms of providing some direct funding that would help us close the remaining two-thirds of the achievement gap quicker, faster, and in a sustainable manner. So, we're, we're very excited about this. It's, it's not something I've experienced before, and certainly not as an initiative from, from the donor community, but it was an exciting morning that we spent in, in Greenwich with them, and, you know, like anything that is well-funded with lots of money, you know, it had every, every organizational aspect of it, with the Brandeis consultants and the director and every, everything else before they even started to involve us. So, I will keep you posted on this after the January meeting. I, I want to also clarify that this is not intended to compete with the work of Norwalk X. Norwalk X is a convener. Norwalk X involves other organizations to help our children in various ways and provide programming, but it is not a direct donor to us. We don't get a penny from Norwalk X. This, this, in contrast, would be some direct assistance to, to fund areas that we may not be able to fund in the regular budget, to, in order to accelerate the Strategic Operating Plan and create a proof point in our state. So, we're very excited about that.
So, the November 14th meeting, should I have the...
November 14th. Tom will run that, and we'll take you through the state budget, as well as any actions that you will need to take subsequent to it.
Stephen, sorry, that's Bayer?
Well, his first name, this is a Dutch name, is Per. It's pronounced Per Heinrich.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's a Heinrich Family Foundation.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, great report. Okay, we'll move on now to the action items. First item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar, Section 52A, approval of bunch of transfers, and 2B, approval of trips. This is one of the more high school, the language department's aim, very, yes, eighteen, there are much to improve. I think moves, second, Eric seconds. Any discussion? Okay, there is none. All in favor of approving the consent calendar? Please indicate. And, as unanimous, thank you. Okay, next item is approval of parent representatives for building advisory committees. I just want to point out the, how this works. As you know, the NORC's Construction Commission actually runs now the construction of all school projects, and they have the actual binding authority to make decisions about the programs. But the ordinance that created the NSCC also calls for advisory committees for each school project. These are advisory-only, but they can serve a broader purpose, and the way that they get appointed is a mix. The chairman of the board puts forth, member of the Board of Education, a councilman from the district where the school is located, the mayor, superintendent, appointing some staff to give them from the schools, and then the parents themselves, through their SGCs or PTOs, recommend appointing these as well. So, the people appointed by the mayor, myself, the superintendent, are all taken care of separately. So, what the board's voting on tonight is the, is confirming of parent representatives that were recommended by the PTOs and SGCs of these schools. I just wanted to put that in context, that we're not electing an entire advisory committee, we're only approving the parents that were recommended by the school groups. So, the chair would entertain a motion to approve parent representatives for the Building Advisory Committee for at least, like, Ang Street School. So moved. Eric moves, second. Is there a discussion? The names, by the way, I just want to note, are Megan Hopkins, who's the chair of the NORC's Schools Governance Council, Adam Lang, who's co-chair of the PTO of the school, and Andy Vitale, who is a PTO member and parent. Any discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of approving these representatives? Please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next is approval of parent representatives for Building Advisory Committee, PONUS-K8 STEM. The list is shown here. Its names are Commander Tina Vow, first grade parent from Jefferson Science Academy, Jefferson included here because this school, this project essentially is going to develop away from Jefferson. Eva Bowes, sixth grade parent and a PONUS SGC member, and Jennifer Montanari, sixth grade parent, PONUS SGC member. Is there a motion approved? Brian moves, Eric seconds. Any discussion?
Yes. We received a second email where it says Sandra Peterson is going to be taking the place of Craig Kreller, so we're going to go with that second email appointment.
That's correct.
That's, that's correct. Craig will continue to be involved, because we need some expertise in STEM on this group. Sandra, however, served on the EdSpecs Committee, and this will also provide some continuity between the work of those two groups.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're updated.
Yes, this is, originally, Mr. Kreller will, will serve a supporting role there. It was actually brought to our attention by the NFT that, you know, the ordinance required us to have a number of the staff from all these schools. Patrick Adamowski, you know, we have, fortunately, he's already been on the EdSpecs Committee, so she was familiar with it, as a science teacher, particularly with this school, going to go into STEM model. I think that's, that's a good choice. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approval? Please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right, next item is approval of contract extension for Dr. Stephen J. Adamowski's superintendent of schools. Is there a motion to approve from the PACA? Moved by Brian, seconded by Per. Discussion?
No, there's none with that, but when, when we're finished, I want to go back to the other motion I, I'm not sure if anyone moved that.
The Building Advisory Committee?
Right.
Was there no motion?
It was moved by Mr. Meek and seconded by myself.
Yeah, yeah, Brian moves and Eric second.
Okay, this one's big.
Okay, good, good. All right, I'd like to just address this. The, the proposal before the board tonight is to extend effectively Dr. Adamowski's contract through June 30th of 2020. The current contract expires on June 30th of next year, and in lieu of just doing the two-year extension, this is actually the contract that effectively reaches active this July amongst three years. The effect of this will be that Dr. Adamowski will serve for five years as superintendent, which was the original commitment that he made to us when he came to us. I did, as I reported in the board exec session a few weeks ago, I did try to get him to push it under, maybe six years, but he said, "No, I told you to get fired, you get fired." And this contract will do that. It, it maintains the, the current pay rate that he's getting today, so there's no change in costs to the district of the contract, but it does extend it out, and I simply have to note that the tremendous amount of progress that the school system has made with Dr. Adamowski. This has taken, has included a lot of commitment from the Board of Education to support a very aggressive set of changes. The NORC school system are going through more changes in a few years than in the previous , well, decades, and they include a strategic operating plan, three-year plan to fix the Special Education, the fixed school facilities, construction plan, and quarter of a century in the first new school since 1971, and, and the changes continue. And they are bringing concrete results, closing the achievement gap. A third is drawing, as Dr. Adamowski just mentioned, the attention from charitable foundations from around the state, who I think are thinking as you indicated, frustrated with what their grants have done in schools, and they now see enough progress, meaning they hear that they think, "You know what? This is the place we want to invest our money into. These people actually are, are changing things." And, so, I'm very happy, at least, to support this proposal. When we first talked to Dr. Adamowski, he made that commitment, and, you know, we've been playing root musical chairs in Norwalk as a superintendent for so long that we needed that degree of stability. He is delivering it, and I very much look forward to his continuing on right through the summer of 2020. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Can we make a motion? Seconded. All right. So, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract extension? Please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we will...
Could I, could I just say a word? No, very, very briefly, I just want to express my gratitude to the board for your confidence in me. The progress our schools have made over the past two years in raising the bar and closing achievement gaps has been a team effort. It involves several hundred teachers, support staff, and school leaders working on multiple fronts, defined by the direction you have provided through our Strategic Operating Plan. I want to thank the board for the privilege of continuing, of providing continuity of leadership to our Norwalk schools at this critical time, and continuing to play a role in realizing our vision of Norwalk, the best city school system in Connecticut.
All right. We will now move on to information reports, starting with committee representative reports. We'll start with you, Finance.
Finance will convene next Thursday, on the ninth, and to, I don't, we don't have a full agenda, but I'd expect we're going to start looking at next year's budget calendar, now that this budget's finally there, and some other smaller items. That's right. Progress. Thanks.
Andy, what's going on in policy?
Progress in policy, as always, but our next meeting, we have a special meeting due to the election and things going on. We're actually going to have it on the 14th at around 6:00 PM. We'll be continuing our discussion on School Governance Council and Title IX, and we're looking at some other things that we'll be discussing as well.
On negotiations with personnel, we have one contract still outstanding, which is the Food Service. We have mediation scheduled through a state mediator next week to see if we can reach and read with the food service workers. If we do that, we can complete all contract negotiations, all unions, their base contracts will be completed. We do have the one contract that is still under discussion with the Teachers Union, the sort of mid-year discussion on the length of day and the length of year that is continuing, but all the basic contracts are pretty much done. Mike, Facilities?
Facilities, things are plugging along. We had a Facilities Committee meeting at Rowington School on Monday night, and we saw the new cafeteria project, which is not 100 percent done, but we saw a good, you know, what's been done so far, which is, you know, probably 90 percent. And we reviewed a number of items. I think probably what was most interesting was, we looked at the enrollment figures for October 1, 2017, and we compared those to what the forecasts from Malone and Brom were, and they were, you know, within spitting distance, very, very close. Malone and Brom really was quite accurate. If we look at our enrollment by school, the one place where we, we did have a surprise where enrollment's really grown more than expected was Norwalk High School, where there may be close to 100 more students than had been anticipated. That, actually, had happened at Bryan McMahon last year, so they've kind of taken turns. But by and large, you know, the enrollment figures are right on track, and we are commissioning Malone and Brom to do kind of an updated projections and kind of give us some, you know, based on the numbers we have this year, what can we expect for 18, 19, which is the kind of work, you know, we've never done, but has kind of gotten us, us into trouble, so we think it's a good use of our, our resources to commission them to do so. Today, we had meetings with the superintendent to review the progress of both the South Norwalk Project, as well as the PONUS Project, and I think the architects have been hard at work. We've made, you know, good progress. Our construction managers for each school have been selected. We went with the low bidders in both cases, and the Land Use Committee, the Common Council, approved them last night, and they will be going into the full council for a vote shortly. And you might say, "Well, why do we need a construction manager this early in the game when the buildings haven't even been designed yet?" But they are going to play a very important role in kind of figuring out costs, figuring out what aspects of the project can be, you know, improved or lowered, cost lowered, where we can cut costs and where we shouldn't cut costs. So, their role is going to be very, very important, which is why we want them on board sooner rather than later. So, I think everything on that front is on track. On Norwalk High School, there have been, there's been a dialogue with the, some representatives from the School Governance Council, as well as the school's administration, as to looking at, you know, we have some money allocated for this year and the next two subsequent years. What should we focus on? What's reimbursable by the state? What's not reimbursable? What would the School Governance Council, which they did a whole project, which was presented to us last year, you know, what would fit in? What, you know, what mechanical work was identified? The Silver Petrocelli Report? Would we prioritize what we, what do we do? And so, that's kind of, I would say, work in progress, but we're starting to identify some things that we would work on in 18, 19. So, all in, you know, we're, we're just continuing what we started last year.
Anything from Master Planning Process?
There was a meeting last night, yes, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend. I had forgotten, so I did get to read a little bit of an article this morning, and I was planning on reaching out to Director Kleppen to get some, some added input, so I can report back, so I apologize that that one slipped through, through my radar.
All right. Okay, so we'll go on to board member announcements. We'll reverse direction, Shirley. We'll get this off.
Yes, I just want to personally thank Dr. Krevikor for his service on the board. His expertise in special ed will definitely be missed, and I just want to wish him the best in his future endeavors, and I just want to make sure that at least we have something put in place for our special ed family. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I'd like to start off with last weekend, last weekend and the weekend before, I did take part in the Haunting at Mill Hill, the Norwalk Historical Society fundraiser, which raises money for amongst many other things, Little Red Schoolhouse program, and I'd like to take this moment to apologize to the mayor and his wife for scaring the bejesus out of them. In our little haunted house, there was a moment, I popped around the corner and saw them, and I definitely got a good, got a good scare. You were just another target for me that night, but it was a wonderful event. It was our most highly attended, so I want to thank everybody in the community that was able to attend. I know Mr. Meek popped by, but it was a little too scary for the little ones, so I understand. I do also want to echo Ms. Mosby's comments. It was really wonderful working with Dr. Krevikor, you know, running a campaign as a freshman and getting to serve with him. I do wish him well and hope that all health matters work themselves out for him.
Mr. Per?
Yes, thank you. Is this working? I don't know if it's working or not, but anyway, a couple of things. First of all, Dr. Krevikor as well, a good servant, highly educated in special ed. He will be missed, and hopefully, everything will work out well for him. Today, me and, well, three first selectmen and two mayors from Fairfield County raided New York. We went down to the Marriott Marquis, and we had a program called Five Reasons Connecticut, where marketing Connecticut, or mainly Fairfield County, to the realtors and other people, business owners in New York, saying, "Take a look at us. We are a destination. Things are working well here." And one of the things that I spoke of that I felt was most important was the quality of our school system and our education, and how we have a world-class school system, how we've reduced the achievement gap by one-third in one year, how we're investing in our school's infrastructure, $130 million in five years, and how we're investing in the strategic plan put forth by the Board of Education. It was well-received. People were very, very surprised to hear about some of the things in Fairfield County, like Fairfield County is number one in the United States of employee, employees with higher degrees, you know, six-year degrees. Things about the nature of our location and all the things we have, the arts and the culture and all those kinds of things. So, the next thing we're going to do is, very shortly, we're going to invite people to come on a tour. In the morning, they'll tour Greenwich and Stanford, in the afternoon, Norwalk, Westport, and Fairfield. We'll provide them with lunch, and then we're going back into New York City, and we're going to have a cocktail hour and form another presentation. Catherine Smith from the DECD was there, made a great presentation. C. Yvonne Hickey was there from Xerox, talked about why they decided to stay in Norwalk rather than move. So, it's really a good presentation. Things went well, and we're looking forward to going out and continuing to market Norwalk. And one of the things that we will be focusing on again is the education and professionalism of our teachers, the professionalism of how things are working, so we're excited about that. And there was one other thing, but I've talked so long, I can't think of what it was, but congratulations.
Mike, anything?
I don't think anything really specific. There was the Norwalk Education Foundation, their annual benefit last week, and a number of us were there, and I think they were successful, but I was very pleased the superintendent introduced me to the president of NJSA, Norwalk Education Association. We had some very productive discussions and have had subsequent meetings, and we're hoping to kind of come up with a plan entering NJSA and Norwalk schools.
Andy?
Back, I believe, the end of October. Shirley, myself, Superintendent Frank, Brenda, Ralph, I believe, as well. Tom went to the NAACP dinner, and, yeah, I thought you'd mentioned that, but I figured that we could talk about it. A great student was honored at West Rocks, which was really amazing. It was very humbling to see that, and a great young man, an eighth grader. Also, we had Daniel Sullivan, who's the head of our department, Guidance Department in Norwalk High School, who's done wonders over the years. I think many of our children have had Dan and still have Dan, and he was honored, and it was a huge honor for him to be recognized that night, and it really was a very, it really was a great night.
Yeah, we, the AT Design, redesign committee convened last week, and it was a tremendous start. A lot of good stakeholders in the group, a lot of good ideas, a lot of brainstorming at first. Dr. Ivette Orvich has us on a good program to come up with something that's more modern, having not been touched in a long time, so we're looking forward to that. And, you know, what was interesting to me about it is while we're talking about AT redesign, this is really going to be a program for all children. It's going to have that segment where, well, it's the truly gifted and the segment of academically talented, but it's going to have outreach to every student, to expose them to some of those tenants. So really looking forward to that, and, you know, we'll have a couple of months to go before there's a final direction on it, but it's started and it's moving along. Thanks.
I did think of what I wanted to say. Just took a little bit of time. As you know, the state now has a budget, I think, to discuss that. So we have a Board of Estment Taxation meeting on Monday night. Prior to that, hopefully either maybe tomorrow at some point or Monday during the day, we can sit together with perhaps Mr. Hamilton, if Dr. Adamowski's available, Bob Barron, me, and perhaps bring Greg Burnett from the Board of Estment. We're going to have to figure out how Norwalk's impacted and how we need to move forward and work together to fund whatever we don't receive from the state. So we're going to try to sit down and do that to make sure that, you know, we fund everybody to what we expect it to be funded at. So we feel comfortable that we have enough in our reserves to take care of it, and we're going to be looking at how we have to do that.
Very great. We were talking about it earlier, about, you know, certain actions that we may have to take in mid-November, and then castle, and if you guys can coordinate this, we can be set up to do that.
Yeah, I think that'll, we'll probably have that all in order by Monday evening when we go into a BET meeting. But I know Mr. Hamilton's looking at the state budget, Bob Barron's looking at the state budget. At least we have a state budget, and we think overall Norwalk is going to be in good shape. It may be down 1.8 million or something, but we'll take care of that.
Harrison, what are we looking at a couple of weeks ago?
10 million.
Lot better. All right, two announcements. One is that since Dr. Kravikor resigned, we had two vacancies, so in order to maintain continuity here as chair, I'm appointing Eric Anderson to take over as chairman of the Special Education Committee. I'm appointing Mike Barbous to take over as the board liaison to the Norwalk Facility Construction Commission, which makes sense since he's our facilities chairman anyway. And the second announcement is that we received a couple of awards from CADE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. We received both in the area of communications. We received an honorable mention for the Modern Schools for Growing City campaign. This was the whole process that we went through to get input and educate people and put together our plan for facilities, and that was an honorable mention. And then we also won the Mahoney B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications for our Norwalk Public Schools Facebook page. So my congratulations to Brenda and her staff for, you know, moving us forward, getting those awards. It's been a serious priority, we know, for the board to approve communications, and we've had some way to go yet, but we're working strenuously on it, and these two awards show we're making good progress. So congratulations. All right, that leaves approval of minutes for, what day is it? October 17? Page sharing, and a motion to approve the minutes for the October 17 meeting. Eric moves. Eric seconds. Any changes, corrections? Eric?
Yes, on page 5 of 8, under the board member announcements, fourth paragraph, we should change Mr. to Dr. Kravikor.
Okay, yeah.
And I am terribly confused with the adjournment.
Kessimus moved to adjourn. Oh, Anderson and Kravikor seconded with a funny over. It's usually you.
And was Mr. Kessimus there? Because I do remember, I thought he left early.
It's not noted that he departed. Usually the minutes are noted.
So then it would be myself.
So it should be Anderson, Anderson is the second.
Okay, I was, the only time, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, anything else? Brian?
Yeah, in the attendance, it's Brian with a Y. That's my mom's fault, not yours.
All right, we'll make that correction. Shirley?
Page 5 of 6. Ms. Mosby stated as she went to Marvin School for the convocation, it should be ribbon-cutting of the playground.
Correct. Okay, we'll make that up. Yes, is it convocation?
I think that was a celebration.
Cavalcade. Cavalcade.
And that's another one.
So the second line is cavalcade.
Yes.
Convocation is to do with teachers.
And with mine as well, when I made it in a comment.
And that should also be cavalcade.
On page 5 of 6.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we've got two cavalcades.
Complication of bands.
And convocations.
I think Brian, it's called the celebration of sound.
Yeah, and Ms. Harris, that too needed to be changed.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Harris as well?
Where's this?
Right above.
All under C.
Yeah.
First paragraph.
That says convocation.
Yeah, so basically, search and find convocation and replace with.
Right. Okay, anything else? I think that does it. So all in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate.
One more.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Page 6. Page 3, you got Mr. Barbous, the US.
That is how, that's how Mac OS spells Texas, by the way.
Oh, yeah? Comes out of the bar. All right. Okay, we're all now. All in favor of approving the minutes, pass a minute, please indicate. And opposed none, and all standing because I was not at the meeting. Minutes are approved. And that's it for this meeting. Chair without a motion to go into executive session with purposes of discussing personnel matters. Eric moves. Second. Eric seconds. All in favor? And we are in executive session.